We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the glory of the Constitution. One nation, under God, in the heavens and on earth.
Move on to approval of the minutes. The meeting is held November 23rd and December 2nd, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are passed. We have three people wishing to address the board on non-agenda topics. So you'll each get five minutes. When you step up to the podium, please state your name and your address. And Carly will kind of give you a heads up when you have a minute and then 30 seconds left so that you can time yourself perfectly. We will first start with Tim Eckert, please.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Tim Eckert. My address is 2312 South Holt Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57103. I am the president of Sioux Falls Education and I am the president of the Sioux Falls Education Association. Last week, Dr. Stavum stated the desire to develop a plan for the Sioux Falls School District that would elevate Sioux Falls to be the best in the country. I am here to report that we have the dedicated staff, dedicated and talented staff here in Sioux Falls to accomplish that ambitious goal. SFEA supports Dr. Stavum in this effort, but we want to make it very clear this plan will only be successful if teachers are consulted and collaborated with in the creation, development, and implementation of this plan. During the unprecedented times of the COVID-19 pandemic, teachers in this district have spent many late nights at school or at home adjusting their sketch, their lessons to be most effective in both an in-person classroom as well as a virtual one. They have given up their planning periods to cover other classrooms when a substitute was not available. They spend their passing periods sanitizing desks instead of greeting students to the hallways. They give up their weekends to create individual lesson plans for students who have, who have missed because they were sick, taking care of a family member who was sick or out with COVID symptoms themselves. Many teachers in the district have students who have been out on two or three occasions, and teachers selflessly stay late to create a plan to help those students get caught up in a meaningful way which encourages and facilitates learning. They do all of this while dealing with their own loss or afflictions with COVID-19 because they are dedicated to the success of their students. Without a doubt, the teachers here in Sioux Falls are among the best in the country. Because they are the best in the country, their voices and input will be vital to the successful development of a new strategic plan. Without the professional advice of educators, this plan will not be complete. True collaboration during the development of this new plan will guarantee that we create the schools our students deserve. SFEA is ready, willing, and open to facilitating that collaborative process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Andrew Travers. Please state your name and address.
My name is Andrew Travers. I live at 1732 South Pennups. I am a teacher at Hawthorne Cleveland, Detroit, Redland. I have two boys in the school district. I rise to speak today on the subject of the conditions of my labor. The environment we teach in is the environment in which our students will thrive. When I'm in my teaching space, fully supported, trusted, and activated, I am able to provide the best opportunities for my students to learn. I'm a lifelong educator from a family history in medicine and teaching. I feel that the noble pursuit of educating every child to succeed in our changing world is essential to our shared future and requires every resource we can align to this lifelong journey. I share with you some of my educational predecessors, my late grandfather, Dr. Robert Thomas Manning, who said of teaching and learning, "If we're not having fun, we're not doing it right." The late Sir Kenneth Robinson, who made it his life's work to emphasize creativity and curiosity and finding our element and our purpose. And Dr. Shinji Suzuki, whose most famous proclamation was that every child can. I'm glad to be supported by our school district and our board when we are recognized for the extraordinary contributions of every staff member, especially this year. Thank you for the financial boost in our paycheck to compensate for all of the extra work being done by my committed colleagues across the district. While the stipend is most welcome, I understand the structure of this bonus could delay future negotiations of the next salary schedule for an additional year. Is this the understanding of the board? Will this stipend withstand the contract by one year? If so, that means that teachers will not get to negotiate their salary for a total of nine years. Further, how can we be comfortable with the majority of our staff not receiving even a cost of living increase for nearly a decade? As I have said at the beginning of my comments here today, the conditions of my labor become the environment of student learning. When I am provided an excellent and well-equipped teaching space, my students are comforted in a classroom that supports their curiosity, challenges them, and grows their talent. When I am supported with commensurate professional compensation, I know that my contribution is not only valued by the marketplace, but I have the freedom to continue to choose to grow my knowledge and abilities throughout the year and over the summer with continuing education without concerning myself with the additional employment just to pay for it. When I am trusted to advocate for, design the structure of, and expect fair and equitable compensation of my professional teaching contributions, I know that I am valued inside and outside the classroom. When I am activated by these supports, I will seek to teach in the Sioux Falls School District today, tomorrow, year after year, and to the best of my ability. I look forward to hearing from our school board and school district on the subject of our labor. I hope to hear assurances that we will be able to continue to advocate for those conditions. I expect that our teacher voices are valued, considered, and respected. I look forward to hearing clarification regarding the stipend. This assurance will guarantee the environment of thriving for our students and the retention of the very best teachers for an exemplary district. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, we have Kayla Sylvester.
Hi, my name is Kayla Sylvester and I live at 3905 South Holbrook Avenue, Sioux Falls, zip code 57106. And I teach at the Elementary Immersion Center and coach debate at Lincoln High School. I am here tonight to urge you to increase collaboration efforts between teachers and the district. Through the collaboration process, educators in the district get to collaborate on student-centered issues that help students thrive. Teachers' working conditions are students' learning conditions. By collaborating with educators to address school and classroom issues together, we can build the schools our students deserve. I want to briefly focus on that word "together." Since the beginning of this year, the district told us that even though these are tough times, we are in this together and that they are valued as staff. And it's easy to see that through the district dialogues. Looking at November 23rd's district dialogue, we know from years of research that the single most important factor in student success is putting a highly qualified teacher at the head of the class. And prior to that, on October 5th, the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly added to the challenges faced by already overextended education systems throughout the world. The issue of teacher leadership in relation to crisis responses is not just timely, but critical in terms of the contributions teachers have made to provide, provide remote learning support, to support vulnerable populations, reopen schools, and ensure that learning gaps have been mitigated. Teachers play a critical role in building resilience among students and shaping the future of education and the teaching profession. And those are from the district dialogues. We can't do those things when we are left out of the decision-making process on issues that directly affect our classrooms. If the district truly values putting highly qualified teachers in classrooms, they need to let those highly qualified teachers help shape the policies that impact those classrooms and those students. This year, I, along with all of my colleagues, have stepped up to provide the best education for our students despite all of the unknowns. We have stepped up, working harder than ever before to support our students in their learning and emotional needs during this uncertain time. In return, we have not been given a seat at the decision-making table. We have been left out of crucial decisions that impact our classrooms and our students. Over the summer, the staff was asked about COVID-19 mitigation measures, and when over 60% of staff indicated they wanted masks required, along with over 50% of parents. That feedback went unlistened to as the district did not require masks. True collaboration means changing the policy based on educator feedback, and educators have yet to seen this happen from the district in many ways. Now it is, now is the time to change that. Engaging in active and true collaboration shows us that you, as a board, you support us. By engaging in good faith, collaborative conversations with your educators, you send a message to teachers that you value their seat at the table and you value their voice. Continuing to leave us out of crucial decision-making conversations is a slap in the face, especially during these challenging times. Forging a collaborative relationship between the board, teachers, and the district should be an easy thing to do, given that the district vision states the district values a highly trained and committed workforce, continually evaluated and improving their own and student performance. We must ignite the hearts and minds of our students, staff, families, and the business community and citizens. You can't truly evaluate what happens in the classroom if you don't consult teachers, and you can't improve if you don't ask experts. To ignite the hearts of your staff, you must first listen to their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. There are no other people wishing to address the board, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The agenda is approved. On to the good news report.
Good evening, everyone. We're just a few short weeks away from ushering 2020 out the door. In so many ways, it will go down as one of the most challenging of our lifetimes, to be certain. I contend, however, that it should also go down as one of the most unbelievable years in the history of the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation. Granted, the foundation is still a relatively young organization, but the successes seen in 2020 are definitely worth highlighting, and those successes are in no small part due to our executive director, Allison Struck. She has been aided through the years, through the year by her volunteer board and board chairman, Anthony Peiser. And Allison will recap 2020 for you.
Welcome back. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I will be presenting on behalf of the Education Foundation Board of Directors. Our mission statement is up on the screen, but since we filed our Articles of Incorporation in 2008, our mission has changed and evolved. But at its core, we really strive to provide opportunities for staff and students within the Sioux Falls School District. And there are a couple of different ways that we do this. Our first program is our public school proud grants. Our second program is our first-time teacher grants. We also have the Student Success Fund, and then our endowment is managed by the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation.
Allison?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you to tip your microphone up just a little bit and get nice and close so we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Our public school proud grants are probably what we are most well-known for, both within the district and the Sioux Falls community. Any teacher can apply for up to $10,000 to purchase materials that give kids hands-on immersive activities in the classroom. When I look back through our grants, our smallest one was $66, which for, it was for an online storyboard collaborative. And then our largest grant was the $10,000 we awarded for the health science simulation mannequins out at CTE Academy. We've awarded grants anywhere from that $66 up to $10,000 across all grade levels and subject areas. So we're proud that one of the grants we were able to award was for electric mallet stations at Memorial and Patrick Henry Middle School. Those two teachers were the first in the state to use that technology. So once they got them and were using them with their band students, music educators from around the region started contacting them to see, you know, if, if, if it was worth the investment. We helped fund the first outdoor classroom at John Harris, and I'll have a picture of that here in a minute. We've done light tables for our youngest learners, drones and robotics kits to help students with coding. We've done garden growing kits at schools like Chorus Man and New Tech High School. We've, we've done kind of everything, and as part of our process, all of our applications are screened by a group of administrators here at IPC and the Grants Committee. We do that for a couple of reasons. Because it is a significant amount of money, we want to make sure that it aligns with the district and the strategic plan, but also we want to make sure that the district can support the technology. And a perfect example of that was the spring, we had two teachers who wanted to use Kindles and robotics kits, and the district doesn't support Kindles, so we went back to the teachers and said, "Could you make this work using iPads?" And they were able to make that adjustment. So that, that's part of our process. Deanne mentioned that it was a record year. We awarded $100,000 in the spring, which was almost double the grant award that we did in 2019. We gave 49 educators 32 grants. So we have a lot of group grants where teachers are working as team members or across the grade level, and they're sharing those materials. Although we weren't able to go into the classrooms with the balloons and the candy and the big announcement, we were able to do it online. We shared it with the staff, and honestly, it was maybe more exciting this year because it was a bright spot when they had transitioned from in-class to remote learning. And we had teachers who let us know that it made them excited to come back in the fall because it meant they could be doing that face-to-face interaction with their students. Here are some photos of the grant materials that we awarded in April that are now being used this semester. That top-left picture is a spray wash cabinet out at CTE Academy. It was an $8,600 grant that was made possible by Graham Automotive. Prior to this, students were hand-washing every part of an internal combustion engine using little brushes and sprays and aerosol cans, and now with this, they can use the same materials that are used by the automotive industry. We have a student from Axle Park who's showing off his fitness band and heart rate monitor. The top right is one of four sensory paths that we've installed. Garfield, Annie Sullivan, Lowell, and Susan B. Anthony have these. So it gives kids a brain break. They can blow off some energy in a positive way in the hallway. And I know both Sanford and Avera are installing these in their pediatric clinics too, so nice to see that. The bottom left, we have a literacy project at Discovery Elementary, and then there's the outdoor classroom at John Harris. The second program that helps us meet our mission is our first-time teacher grants. These are $200 grants that are given to every first-time, first-year teacher. We started this program in 2008, and we were awarding $100 per teacher. In 2017, we were able to bump that up to $200 per teacher. And then in August, at new teacher orientation, we awarded 68 of those grants. We do expect to award a couple more second semester, just as new staff come on. But it's really up to the teacher's discretion to spend those funds how they, how they need to, to get their classroom up and running. So bulletin boards, posters, games, puzzles, classroom sets of books. This year, we had teachers buying school supplies in case a student came and didn't have something, just to cut down on. have something, just to cut down on the spread of the virus. Instead of maybe sharing like they would normally do, they would just have some in their classroom. The Student Success Fund is something that the foundation started in 2018. It's really to address the equity gap in schools across the district. We provided things like emergency food assistance, hygiene products. We fund our GED scholarships through this program, bed bug cream, life shampoo. We work very closely with the Department of Student Services and our school-based social workers so that we can connect the kiddos with those resources. The funds run through the foundation, and then we distribute them out through the Department of Student Services. This fall, we also use this fund to send two social workers to the Community Resilience Model Training. Those social workers will then train the other social workers, and they'll do a training at Axle Park second semester. So really best practices for working with students who have had adverse life experiences and a lot of trauma in their background. A couple of the unique partnerships we've had this year through the Student Success Fund is, you can see with winter coming, winter gear is always something that we need, providing things like underwear, again, that emergency food and gas assistance. We've had generous donations from Realtors for Kids, the South Dakota Community Foundation, the Huthar Family Foundation, and then also individual donors who support that. With winter approaching, we also have a promotion right now with Stride Right here in Sioux Falls will be providing 200 pairs of really nice quality boots to some of our kids. We worked with the Sioux Valley Optimist Club. They had these beautiful handmade wooden toys. So we were able to distribute fan holders, privilege boards, and kaleidoscopes to our kids at the beginning of the school year. And then we recently partnered with Hy-Vee to distribute 245 and giving meals right before break when students went home. And then just to wrap up, we always have our yearly events and campaigns. The State of the School District was in August. Dr. Stavum was our speaker, her first year as superintendent. So it was also our first year as a virtual event, which it was the most successful State of the School District we've had, but we hope to be back in person next year. I think all of you attended our student showcase in 2019. That was a fantastic event. The students did a great job. Of course, we've had to postpone that till 2020. So hopefully, once we have a date, we'll share that with you. But we were excited to do that. The Culinary Arts kids were going to do some unique things with the menu this year. So hopefully, next year, we can do that. The Above and Beyond Award is something we started during the pandemic to really recognize those staff members who are going the extra mile. We awarded gift cards to those who were nominated. Everyone who was nominated got entered into a drawing, and then we awarded 15 gift cards. And then Teacher Appreciation Week, we do a promo, and our board always adopts one of the elementary schools during conferences, and we provide them with a meal. So we've had great momentum. We've had a successful year, and we hope to continue building on that. So I just wanted to take the time to thank the school board for supporting what we do, and we hope to continue this in 2020.
Thank you, Allison. It was, I believe, about July of 2018 when you were hired as our first full-time Sioux Falls Education Foundation Director. So you've been going great guns ever since. I really appreciate your dedication to your mission and what your board is doing to help our teachers and students in our district and supplement the public monies we receive. So thank you for all your dedication to this, and thank you for being successful at what we do.
Allison, there are three things that stand out to me with what you all are able to do for the district. The first is donor relations, that you're out there cultivating new donors as well as partnerships with the community. Number two, that you're able to collect the donor data and information so that that can be continued on going forward. Number three, then aligning those donor interest areas with the strategic plan of the Sioux Falls School District, allowing for additional spending to be spent intentionally so that we can continue to meet our benchmarks and the goals that we set forth to improve student outcome at the end of the day. So I want to thank you for that. And then last, the endowment that you've started, that we have funds that will be good for good forever and be able to spend a portion of that towards those improved student outcomes. So thank you for those efforts.
Thank you. There were no new conflicts of interest to present. I'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items 11A through D?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 12A, 1 and 2, do I have a motion to approve Sanford Healthcare System Claims?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Onto 12B, Claims to Avera Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto the reports to the superintendent, Dr. Stavum.
Yep, we have two reports tonight. Both are curriculum evaluation updates. The first is on personal finance and business curriculum that was added. And Kristin Granago will give that first, and then we have a second report on family and consumer science curriculum. And both of those, I think, have undergone some significant improvements and some things. We've gotten some nice feedback from what our teachers have said has worked much better and better experiences for our students, and so we will turn it over to you.
Good evening. The focus of the Personal Finance, Business, and Marketing Curriculum Study was to provide students with more opportunities for real-world application. Through the new curriculum and instructional materials, teachers are finding ways to engage students in active learning that applies to real-world today situations. In their home buildings, students have the opportunity to enroll in business, marketing, and personal finance courses. But then in addition, students may take courses in the Academy of Finance at the Career and Technical Academy. Students who enroll in the Academy of Finance may earn up to 25 college credits. The Fundamentals of Personal Finance also implemented new curriculum. This curriculum provides instructions to students served within the RISE program, whose Individual Education Program, or IEP, has determined a modified curriculum in this area. The Personal Finance course is offered as an elective and occurs on a rotating basis with several other RISE electives that support the transition to adult skills. A survey was sent out to teachers this fall, following the first year of implementation of the new curriculum. Teachers reported some positive changes, and those include, they believe the new materials make examples in the content truly relevant for students in today's world. Students are learning important lessons about budgeting, saving, insurance, and banking. And these are highly engaging for students because they're realistic and tools that students can use today and will use throughout their lifetime. The updated semester test also provides teachers with better information about what material students have mastered and what standards have been met. The textbook has online capabilities, and students can access the online version whether they are in school or not. The recommendations that teachers provided included continuing to bring in community partners as speakers, which we've been able to still do this year virtually, and to continue to provide time for teachers to collaborate across the district. The Personal Finance, Business, and Marketing Curriculum is aligned with the state standards and works to engage students in real-world applications. The curriculum coordinator will continue to monitor the implementation of the curriculum and organize professional development. In addition, will work with teachers to revise activities and develop district-wide assessments as necessary. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do, and I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot because I didn't prep you for this one, but I, with the new career pathways that the state adopted for high school graduation and so forth, could you explain just quickly to the public how that now works with this curriculum as well? And how that it's better, since now Algebra II is not required, for example, to graduate?
Right. So Personal Finance remained a graduation requirement. Students have the choice of taking either Personal Finance or Economics, no matter if they're graduating with a diploma or any of the endorsements. But one of the endorsements is the Career and Technical endorsement. And so for students who want to seek that endorsement, this is a great path because they need two credits through the CTE path. And the Academy of Finance is a great opportunity for students to move in that direction, particularly if they're thinking that they might be interested in working in the business world.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, I can say my daughter in high school is taking this class right now, and a couple of times randomly at work, I've gotten, "How much do you pay for my car insurance?" Or, "What's our garbage bill?" You know, and I'm like, "What in the world?" And she's like, "I'm in class." And I'm like, "Oh." So it's actually led to really good conversations, and we've looked up different, you know, "This school is this much for tuition, and that's not just, that's your tuition, then you still have to live, and how much is rent?" And so when you're talking about kind of that real-life opportunity for them to learn and apply it, I think that I have seen that in my own family where she's asking more questions about things that maybe she hasn't thought about before. And so I think that those are all really good and very important skills for people to have and understand the benefits of, you know, post-secondary education, or, you know, when your kids get mad and say, "I just want to move out," you know? Well, do you have $900 a month for rent? You know? So I just think that there's lots of great conversation starters to open those conversations at home with parents and help kids to understand why it's not just as easy to go and buy whatever it is that they want, whether it's a pair of jeans, or, you know, that's two tanks of gas, or, you know, things like that. So very important skills for our students to have as they enter the real world. So I'm glad to see that the updates were made to be more reflective of that.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
In an era of plastic and Amazon, to the extent that they're learning cash flow, it's incredibly important.
I think so, too.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge your report of the Personal Finance, Business, and Marketing Curriculum implementation, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Kristin.
Demi Moon is going to provide our second update on the Family and Consumer Science Curriculum.
Good evening. Similar to Kristin, I'm here to report on the implementation of the Family and Consumer Science Curriculum. After a full year of implementation, we are now in that evaluation stage, and so I'll just share a few of the highlights of that process. First of all, from the middle school perspective, we went into this curriculum study with two big goals. One, to bring our curriculum more up-to-date with industry standard and have the things that students were studying be more reflective of things that were happening out in different industries in these areas. And the second was to provide our students at the middle school level a really good understanding of what their opportunities were once they leave middle school and they can kind of choose their own pathways in high school. And so we really wanted them to understand what their options were. Due to the rapidly changing nature of both food, design, textiles, child development, and finance industries, the teachers really wanted a curriculum that was fluid and able to be adapted throughout the cycle. So they chose to write their own curriculum instead of purchasing a prepackaged curriculum. In addition to that, they also wanted to turn the sixth and seventh grade curriculum into a two-year cycle, and that was really to help maximize planning and preparation for the numerous lab opportunities. So now sixth and seventh graders all go through the same curriculum at the same time, and when sixth graders move up to seventh graders, they just do the second year in that cycle. So that, as far as being in year two of that process, the teachers are really happy with the way that that's worked, and they feel like shopping is a lot more manageable and setting up those labs is a lot more manageable for them, both in the sixth and seventh grade, since all of our teachers teach at both levels. While continuing to provide sixth, seventh, and eighth graders the opportunity to learn basic cooking and baking skills, that curriculum also explores science and nutrition components of foods. Because of that, and because of the goal of wanting our classroom and our lab experiences to be more industry standard, there was a desperate need to update the equipment to be reflexive of the curriculum and the needs of the curriculum. And so all of our kitchens and all of our middle schools got a complete overhaul, and all of their equipment is now new and identical. So we don't have kind of the haves and the have-nots. And the teachers were here, they would tell you they're just happy all their pots have matching lids now. So that was kind of a highlight for them. Students in these middle school courses also explore the topics of personal finance, textile design, child development, basic childcare, sewing basics. We have put that back into the curriculum again. We feel it's important that everyone leaves this class knowing how to at least sew on a button and make some basic stitches. And then they also study family relationships. In addition to that middle school curriculum already described, there is also a Fundamentals of Family and Consumer Science curriculum that is offered for our RISE students in our RISE program. This curriculum allows these students to receive the same educational benefits and explore the same topics as the students in the traditional FACS curriculum. However, there is adaptations made, both to the curriculum and to the equipment that they use in order for them to have the same experiences. Teachers throughout the next six years of the cycle will continue to monitor the effectiveness of the curriculum through both common and formative, through both common, formative, and summative assessments. And then they will get together and collaborate on those. In fact, we have one of those opportunities coming up on Friday. A survey was sent to all of the middle school FACS teachers this fall in order to get their feedback on the new curriculum and the process of implementation. Some of the positive themes that came from that survey were that the teachers feel like they are definitely more of a cohesive unit, and they have those abilities to collaborate, and that they feel like they're all teaching the same curriculum, no matter what building that they're in. And so they are very happy with that, and they feel like if one of them wants to make a change, that they're very open as a group to talking about those changes. As far as recommendation, they continue to just want professional development so that they can continue to be the best at their jobs and be up to date on what is industry standard. And they also want to continue to have time to do that collaboration. At the high school level, the major changes to the high school curriculum were to update the textbooks, update the kitchen equipment as well, and to purchase some new infant simulators. Both the food recipes inside of the food curriculum and those infant simulators that were purchased now better reflect the diversity and the culture of our students in our population here in the Sioux Falls School District. So that was nice to see as well, and definitely a needed change. Students at the high school level have the opportunity to roll in different courses, both at their home high school, and then specialize in areas out at the Career and Technical Academy. The high school curriculum study also includes the Fundamentals of Food Preparation, which is a course that provides instruction to students with significant cognitive disabilities, whose IEP determines that they need a modified course content. This course supports the transition to adulthood components of the student's IEP and is offered as an elective occurring on a rotating basis. The course is set to be offered in the 2022-23 school year and is designed to teach students the basics of food preparation, kitchen safety, meal planning, and appropriate food handling strategies. Again, the teachers at the high school will continue to monitor the effectiveness of the new curriculum through common, formative, and summative assessments. They too surveyed their teachers, and some of the positive changes that teachers reported were that the kitchens all have the supplies and tools necessary to allow them to teach students how to cook for themselves and for their families, that the new materials make the content relevant for students in today's world, that the interior design classes are busy learning about careers related to the field, and I would tell you that at all levels, that integration of careers is a huge focus. The new babies or the new infant simulators have made it easier for students to have an accurate experience. And the textbooks definitely have those online capabilities that allow that flexibility of both a textbook feature and that digital access to the resources. And that they have updated instructional materials that are more engaging for students. Again, recommendations are to continue that professional development and allow for time for the teachers to collaborate. I would entertain any questions.
Thank you, Demi. When I first came on the board and we started doing curriculum reviews and updates, I was surprised we didn't do updates right after we implemented the new. And I'm glad to see we've now went to that process because it's really important for us to see if we need to even make some more tweaks after we've adopted this new curriculum. So thank you very much for these reports in these areas. Is there a reason on the implementation in the high school IEP curriculum why it has to wait until fall '22, '23?
I think it's based, and Kristin, you can correct me, I think it's based on demand for the class, and so it's set up on a rotational basis, on an every-other-year basis. on an every-other-year basis. Is that correct? I'll let Kristin add to that.
So in the RISE program with the electives, they are on a rotating basis. So personal finance is one year, and then...
So that's what it would be in their...
Yep, so through the four years, every student will have the opportunity to take those electives, but because of the schedule constraints, they are on a rotating basis.
I didn't know if we needed to look at something budgeted or like, you know, that we weren't being...
No, they were included in the study, so they have the materials that they need, and they'll be ready to go.
I think similar to personal finance, these are just great life skills for our students to have, whether it's, you know, making basic nutritional meals for yourself or just even reading a label, kitchen safety, things like that. So I think, again, it's great that we can offer these. It also offers, I think, the students maybe a break in their day from some of their harder, core content classes and gives them some enjoyment, just on a different way of being able to go and kind of have a downtime for a period. So I think it's great that we offer these. I just would like to request that they bring back the locker organizers that I made when I was in eighth grade. It was red and blue and yellow, and you had to sew it. It was amazing. Does anybody remember those?
Yes.
Now they make monsters.
So, I mean, I can't sew a button on, but I can make you a locker organizer. So maybe the button is more important than that. But anyways, I think it's great that we get exposure to all these different skills for our students at multiple different levels, middle school, and then, again, options in high school to continue to look at those. And I love, as you mentioned, that we're really looking at that career aspect. And if you enjoy this, what might this lead to? And get kids thinking about that at earlier ages, because I think that's so important for them to find things, not just that they know they can get paid to do, but that they actually enjoy. And maybe it's a skill or a talent that they have that has gone unfounded until they explored a class like these that we're offering. So thank you very much for the report.
Absolutely. The middle school and high school teachers did do some collaborating to make sure that the middle school teachers totally understood what all the options were for students when they get into high school, because they want to make sure that they encourage them to register for those classes and pursue those opportunities, both at the home building and then out with the Career and Technical Academy.
Very nice.
So not to upstage your story, but we still have Matt's quilted pillow that he studied in middle school here in Sioux Falls. So one of my kids is bad.
Going to go find mine.
I think, you know, what I love about both of these is that we've included the RISE students and having those opportunities available to them. So I just really appreciate that we took that group of students into consideration as we did these curriculum studies. So thank you very much for that.
It was amazing to me, the equipment that I wasn't aware of, that was available for our students to have that equitable experience.
Yep, it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments? Do I have a motion to acknowledge the report of the FACS curriculum implementation?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. There is policy. Harley?
Yep, I will do that. So in an effort to keep our policies and regulations updated, members of the administration and this year, Board Member Parker and myself are on the review committee. And so today, we bring forward to you five different policies and their accompanying regulations that we have reviewed. And there are either minor or no changes that are recommended to these. So the first one is Policy BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings. We actually reviewed this one a couple of months ago, and there was just one line that kind of got missed from our edits. And so this is just bringing that back to be able to remove that conflicting language that was on there. Policy IHCA in the accompanying regulation, summer instructional programs, just updated language regarding program funding. Classroom IIB, class, or Policy IIB, class size, there were no changes made to that. Policy JGH in JHR, student travel, just added, you know, in our current environment, just added some information or language about authorizing the superintendent or the designee to cancel any student trip outside of the district due to unsafe or unforeseeable conditions. So we do have a lot of clubs, whether it's banned or foreign language or anything else that do travel. And so wanting to make sure that we're keeping our students safe and our teachers safe that might be traveling with them. And Policy KEA, public concerns or complaints about policies, no changes were made to that. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the review revision of those policies and their accompanying regulations.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just like, we did receive one comment on the BEDH changes. And because it was really just clarifying the conflicting language that we had had in there before, we didn't feel like we needed to move this to a first reading. So I just, for anyone watching at home, that's the reason why we decided to stay with the review revision on this policy.
Again, very minor or no changes to all these right content goals. Nothing that takes away anyone's potential to come and speak to us.
Any other comments? Saying none. I have a motion, second. All those in favor of approving the review and revision of the above policies and regulations, BEDH, IHCA-IHCA-R, IIB, JGH-JH-HR, and KEA, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. I just want to mention, December 12th, we are having a retreat where we are going to start out on the strategic update and revision. And we do look forward to working with teachers and all this. This is just the very first step. We're just kind of laying a roadmap, and there will be plenty, probably too much, you'll be tired of us, as you can hear, for input from everyone for our strategic plan because we do know it's a team effort. And the only way we'll be successful with that team effort is having that input from everyone. So thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the board?
Cynthia, just to up with what you're saying. Thanks to those that spoke to us at the beginning of the meeting and the collaboration and the teacher input and continuing with that great relationship that it really resonates, especially in light of what Cynthia is talking about in updating the strategic plan. You are all critically important to us and that student success. So thanks again for coming tonight.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.